I'll call to order the Tuesday, September thirteenth, 2022 Town Council Committee of the Whole to order at six thirty-three. Roll call. All councilors are present, so that's a quorum. Calendar and Communications, Councilor McBride.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, we held the Property Reuse Committee. We had a pretty, very interesting meeting, quite a lengthy meeting. We had a lot of residents that either came out and discussed numerous concerns and questions and comments they had on the current draft. Want to thank Councilor Bordelon and Councilor Westerveld for attending, as well as the work they've done coming up with where we're at in that draft. We will take those comments and recommendations. We'll draft them into the draft minutes, and then we have our follow-up meeting, I think, next week or the week after, where we'll modify the document and have that for further review. But that was a productive meeting and wanted to thank the residents that came out and provided comments, because that's what we're looking for. Also, on Saturday morning, I attended the Greenleaf Memorial Road Race, which we run for a friend of ours who perished in nine eleven. It was a very successful event, had over one hundred and twenty-five participants. That same day, I also attended the Fitch JV Football Game, which was exciting to see. The outcome wasn't what we wanted, but it was good to see the JV team performing well and holding themselves up. Also attended on September eleventh, the memorial event in Groton Long Point, which was well received, attended over, you know, one hundred and fifty or so people, so that was a wonderful event. And Tuesday, as a member of the CCM Committee, I attended the Education Appropriations Taxes and Finance Committee meeting, where we put together, the group put together some recommendations on possible changes that will be going to the legislature later this year. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Westerveld?
Thank you. Last week, as Councilor McBride stated, we took part in the Property Reuse Committee meeting, which was very, very informative, had a lot of participation, so it's, it's looking like a really good effort is being made on this. So thank you for everyone who came out and supported that. Additionally, I received tons of communications about a number of things, including the SDRs again, and also updates or looking for updates on the Mystic Coral School situation. Additionally, last night, we kicked off the new season of the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Youth Orchestra and Strings Ensemble at Northeast Academy, and I'd like to thank Stephanie Marshall and the Principal Ryan Chaney for all their help in getting that moving. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
Thank you. I too also attended the Property Reuse Committee along with Councilors McBride and Councilor Westerveld. I thought it was very informative as well. I thought there were a lot of good dialogue and feedback. I encourage anybody that has any information that they'd like to consider, please submit it, email it to the Chair or all three of us. And every meeting, we do have a public comment, so I encourage more folks to come out and definitely, you know, be a part of it. I'm, I'm very big on open, you know, open communication lines, transparency, and making sure people are allowed to be around the table, and this is a very open platform to do such. So we welcome it and we will recognize you. I also, let's see, attended on Friday on the Navy Base, a remembrance for September eleventh, since it fell on Sunday. They had a really nicely done event on the base with the chaplain and a lot of the active duty members there. And on that same day, followed at twelve-thirty at the Nautilus for her return back to the museum for her overhaul, which they stated should last hopefully about thirty years. Very exciting. Anyone who's been here or has traveled through here, one of the coolest things about Groton and the best things is that it is the submarine capital, and at any, any point, anybody that's ever been on a submarine comes through Groton. And a lot of people spoke about when they come back, they always make it a trip to bring their family there. So it was just heavily attended. The Governor and several other elected officials were there. Counselors were invited, as well as city representation was there. And the big thing that, that was the most inspiring was actually somebody who served on the Nautilus that spoke. And that was very powerful, very moving, and Groton should be very proud. We also presented the vote that the council had taken on the name change, so that also went up. And it was nice, when I was walking out, I could hear somebody walk and say, oh, that was something I wasn't expecting to happen. And they were very excited about the name. So, you know, councilors up here should be proud. It was a nicely thought-out part of the ceremony, and it fit very nicely. I got communication from folks in Branford Manor. Communications have been ongoing. Folks are still feeling frustrated with the lack of response. The recent communication I got was that a resident's heater pipes are leaking, and they've been leaping onto her floor and dripping down. So just leaking in general wetness is, is the concern there. Housing as well. Let's see. I also got communication about short-term rentals. Also, some communication regarding, from the public comment from last meeting where folks were concerned of the noise downtown Mystic, and the concern with the porches and different areas going up, and all of the concerns that folks spoke about on that day. Also attended Fitch High School marching band and competition. It was in Bethel, Connecticut, and Fitch did a very nice job. And that is it. I think our first home game for varsity is this Thursday. Got moved from Friday, so come out and sport the band and the football. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Casseri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just want to wish all of our young Groton athletes a fantastic fall season, for those who are playing fall sports. I know many are having their first games, and such as I attended the Groton Soccer Club games this weekend. I received various emails and correspondences regarding ARPA fund usage, Mystic Coastal Access RTM meetings, Branford Manor, information that Mystic Restrooms do not close, planning and zoning application correspondence, the surviving spouse tax abatement ordinance, Mystic Education Center, a pump outage issue that was rectified, and I did receive a USPS mailed letter from Mr. Fitzgerald regarding coastal access. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Property Reuse Committee as well. Great meeting, and thank you for allowing the opportunity for the public to comment. Also attended, in the wee mornings, the Groton City Brewer Run. Was able to cheer on our fellow counselor Bruce Jones, as he was walking at a, at a great speed. Where'd you, how'd you place?
An hour and ten minutes.
Not bad, not bad. But it was great to see so many folks enjoy themselves and cooled themselves off with a beverage afterwards. Also attended, as with Councilor Bordelon, Councilors Jones and Parker and Mayor Melendez, the grand reopening of the Historic Ship Nautilus, just an incredible event, along with the Manager Burt. Incredible event, several dignitaries and several past and present elected officials and leaders in our community, many of whom are in our audience as well. And, you know, I think, again, that little bit to, you know, make an impact by, you know, renaming Crystal Lake Road now submarine Capital Avenue is really the icing on top. So great, great day, and also a more solemn event this weekend. Attended the Connecticut Maritime Heritage Festival's September eleventh Ceremony. Very moving. You know, the Coast Guard cadets and several of our sailors here at the subbase participated in a very moving event. And just want to thank the organizers, certainly the Ops Sale Committee and several other volunteers for putting on a just incredible morning of festivities honoring those who are first responders and, you know, and victims of nine eleven. And lastly, did receive correspondence from the IAF Local F-219. There represent the officers of the subbase firefighters voicing their support for the inclusion of their membership in the ordinance. Should we, I understand the RTM Finance Committee has indicated that they still take issue with the ordinance that, you know, where we stripped the language that included the firefighters. But it looks as if the ordinance may be coming back our way, and so I wanted to share that the membership has vocalized that they would like to see to be re-included in the ordinance should we bring it back up for discussion. And that is all. Thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the Historic Nautilus, just the program brochure for it, reopening on Friday. It was a terrific event, well, well, attended and went with many of our fellow counselors and Town Manager Burt. What was particularly exciting that I've never seen before is the relaunching of the ship, where the sailors come from the dock and they run up onto the sub and stand at attention along the entire length of it. So that was kind of cool to see that, and it was, it was an extremely well-attended event, and it was a great reopening for that museum and ship. On Friday also, I attended the two thousand twenty-two Annual Senior Art Show, which is being held right here in the senior, the Thrive Fifty-Five Senior Center, it's out in the lobby. So I encourage everybody to check out all the art from the seniors. You can take a look at that. That's kind of a, that's the fun, fun thing. Yes, I did do the City Brew Run on Saturday. This is my first race I've ever, I've ever done. I walked it. They added a walking component this time. I think they had about two hundred and sixty people, so it was really well-attended, very nicely done, a great thing to have for the city. It was a beautiful day, and I, I did it with RTM member Eddie Jacome, who ran it, and I walked it, and we actually came in about the same time. So we did, he did really great. And I also, on Sunday, visited, just so I knew where it was, the downtown Mystic Restrooms, just to take a look at them, and they are open twenty-four seven. There is no way to actually lock those doors, and they're nice, clean, and just perfect for any tourist or visitor that's going down there. So it's just nice to, I just had never seen them before, so we made sure we could see them, so. And then I also took the, had the same emails and correspondences that all the councilors did.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
I too attended the US Nautilus event. Very moving. Glad I was able to get the opportunity to see everyone there. I also stopped by the Groton Public Library, where the Groton Education Foundation is hosting an art auction. So if you have an opportunity to check it out, it's in the Community Room One, onto the left side. Beautiful watercolors, oil paintings, they have jewelry, they have an online silent auction going and a live auction. If you guys feel like supporting, it's going to happen on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, but you can view everything at the Groton Public Library and online. And all the communications everyone previously spoke about, I received too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Franko?
I had many of the same communications as the other councilors, as well as other conversations with residents within the community. I watched the Reuse Committee. I had a meeting with the Quonix Bridge Fire Department Board President, as well as the chief. I attended the Beautification Committee meeting, where there's much going on, and they will be having a daffodil sale on October fifteenth, beginning at nine-thirty at the Thrive Fifty-Five, and we'll have more information on that. I also attended the City Brew Run. It was a very nice event. I'm also excited about the Groton Education Foundation that Councilor Parker talked about, and I really want to win that homemade, handmade quilt that they're getting, they're raffling off. And also, we did receive communication that there's the USS Groton Sail Foundation, and they are inviting people to attend the Sail Monument Project launch on September nineteenth at four PM at the Groton Library. And they will be unveiling the site of the future USS Groton Sail Monument, and it's going to be dedicated to the men and women who design, build, operate, and maintain submarines, and the families and communities that support them. So I'm very excited for that, and I hope there's a big crowd that shows up to, for that. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a note that the council will be moving back to the annex starting on October fourth. So that's our first meeting in October. Just for, you know, residents that have followed the council for some time, that was our old stomping grounds, pre-pandemic, and the room's ready for us to make our return. For those not familiar, the address is one thirty-four Groton Long Point Road, and again, we will be returning there starting in October fourth, and there will be public comment to that meeting, so I'll make this announcement again at the next meeting. Also, I've received numerous comments and concerns from the public regarding the general lack of decorum and professionalism displayed during our meetings. As the Chair, the responsibility for this unfortunate fact can only lie with me. As such, I intend to implement, implement changes that will help this council work more effectively and efficiently, starting with two referrals I'm making to the Rules Committee concerning response to citizens' petitions, and a motion to move the questions, so Chair Parker, keep an eye out for that. Also, upon our return to the annex, a digital clock will be displayed, so councilors and residents can see their remaining time in real time, and also assigned seating for councilors will be re-implemented. Hopefully, these changes can aid our council in having productive meetings, but if not, rest assured, further actions will be taken. Onto approval of the minutes, I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, so moved.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Councilor Bordelon?
Thank you. You know, on here, I think the agenda, you know, it looks great. It has a lot of communication. Some have like five, six, eight lines, which is wonderful. And then I feel in some areas, it didn't really accurately kind of summarize this. I know we've stated they are a summary, so I won't labor the point, but I just think there could be a little bit more added to the area on page four. Councilor Bordelon, Baumgartner shared their views on the default. What about the default? Were we in favor of it? Were we against it? It just is a very open-ended, it doesn't, so I guess I'd like to see that to be amended to say. Well, I'll speak for myself. Councilor Bordelon shared that her views on her willingness to, you know, engage in looking into a default. You can, you can go back, you can go back on the meeting, which I did to re-watch the section, and there's definitely, that's just a very open-ended statement with not any meaning. So that's the amendment I propose. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote on favors. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Care is unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business, page ten, USS Groton Sail Update.
If you can introduce yourself for the public.
Sir?
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah. I'm John Haged. I'm the president of the Groton Sail Foundation, and Mark is my vice president. We wanted to update, update this group to make sure you're aware of what we're doing. It was mentioned, we're having a kickoff event on Monday, the nineteenth of September at four o'clock, just right over next to the library. By way of update, we've been working on this now for quite a few years, and it's been paused in part because of the pandemic, but we also were, we had a little bit of trouble finding the right site. We found the site now. We first pitched in, in the spring of two thousand nineteen, and then we met with the town, the foundation met with the Town Council in November of two thousand twenty. The state had agreed to allow the Groton to purchase the site that we had determined, and the foundation raised the money and gave the money to the town of Groton for, to purchase the land. That, that purchase occurred in late two thousand twenty. And, and then we were, we're working on resolutions to make sure that the, the interests of the town were looked into. Basically, the foundation's intent is to deliver a fully operable and self-sustaining monument, as was mentioned earlier, for the, the men and women who design, build, operate, maintain submarines and also their families. We've had some, we're trying to emphasize the fact that it's very much a submarine community, and, and we've been trying to keep this group informed of our progress. Early in two thousand twenty-one, Town Manager Burt and I signed an MOU relative to the easement of the property, and we exchanged the, in February, we exchanged the check of ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars so that the town could purchase the Route seventeen property, Route one seventeen property from the state. That's now been accomplished. Recently, we've been working to refine the design of the monument, which is going to look about like that. And we've been working on that. We received a very nice financial contribution from General Dynamics Electric Boat. We're trying to specifically define the pro bono work that's going to be done in support of our effort. We have some pro bono work going to be done by General Dynamics Electric Boat, and some by some folks out in town, and we're just trying to make sure we define that so we can more clearly identify the financial fundraising we need. One item that is still yet to be resolved, it is our intent to ensure that when the monument is complete, that there is no follow-on cost associated with the town maintaining it. So there's two ways we can do that. One is we can leave a, some money in an account to take care of that, but the other, other opportunity is that if we can have the government transfer the rudder and the sail and the components to Naval History and Heritage Command, so that they would be responsible, and then Naval History and Heritage Command will then lend it to the foundation, and then that would allow Navy History, Naval History and Heritage Command to contribute to the refurbishment, and also would allow them, but since it would therefore be a Navy-owned monument, when it comes time to repaint the thing or whatever, the Navy would do that, just like the Flasher down at, the Flasher Memorial for the World War II subbets. That's still a work in progress. I have a, well, as firm a commitment as you can get for Washington Money Matters, I have a commitment to have an answer by the end of November as to how that'll move, and so that, that's still yet to be determined. We are also, we're in the process of compiling a video of various folks talking about the monument. We had, and it's good, we, we shot quite a bit of video, and we're going to then pare it down into a minute or two loop that people can look at, and we can use that on our website. We got Congressman Courtney to talk, so we have about, we have about fifteen minutes of Congressman Courtney. I spoke. We videotaped the ceremony that was discussed earlier about the return of the Nautilus. We basically videoed all of that, so we had Senator, both Senators and Congressman Courtney, Senators from the state and Congressman Courtney, and the Governor all spoke, so we'll be able to clip that together. And I, we expect that to be complete probably within the next week or two, so we'll be able to have something, and we can make it vary the length of it depending on who the audience is, and so that'll work out well. Our public Capitol campaign, well, we hired a local consultant to help us and put together a fairly comprehensive strategic plan, which, which allows us then to say, okay, we have the, the tasks identified that we need, and we'll get ahead and get on with that. Our Capitol campaign will kick off in early October of this year. As I said, the video will then be part of the, will be part of the sort of advertising. We do think that this is a very, it's a powerful statement of support for the folks who operate, design, maintain, and, and build the ships, and I think it's a strong statement about the support of the families or for the families by the community. As, as an example, with the President of the Submarine Officers Spouse Association agreed to be videotaped. Her husband is executive officer onboard a deployed submarine. The submarine just got extended on deployment. When the submarine gets back from deployment, he's going to transfer to Washington DC probably about a week after the ship returns in November. And she was just talking about how the wonderful support from the school system to help from the, from the neighbors and around, so it was just a lovely compliment to the fact that this really is a community effort, and I think it'll, it'll, it'll represent us well. Our plan now is to get all the land use applications and plans reviewed and approved by the town, and we'll have to get an MOU to sign for applications for the project to be built on town property, but I think that's well on pace to be executed. We think the remediation work on the sail and the rudder will start probably in November. And again, that, there is a contingency there depending upon whether or not History and Heritage Command gets the, gets the sail and rudder, or whether they just give it to us. We expect that the construction work will be started in the springtime, probably March-April timeframe of two thousand twenty-three. There's a Groton, Groton Sail or a USS Groton Reunion Event, which we're trying to tie in. But I think it's important to understand that it's not a USS Groton Memorial, it's submarine, everybody's submarine memorial. And we expect to start, like I say, the, the site work will start in the spring of two thousand twenty-three, and we hope to be able to finish up by the end of the year two thousand twenty-three and have it be an active monument. And if, if any of you are interested, like I say, four o'clock on the nineteenth is we're going to unveil a sign at the location, and we'd love to have you stop by and, and join us in the celebration. I promise it'll be brief, and Mark's here to answer all the hard questions.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I just want to, you know, thank you and your group for the work that you do. I've, I've attended some of your meetings, and, and I, you know, I hear about all the, all the work that goes behind the scenes, and I, and I just want to thank you for all that work, first and foremost. But I have a question about sort of the town-owned versus Navy-owned scenarios. Town-owned, you'd say there'd be some money left over. Is there any projection on how long that would last? And also, if we go the Navy-owned route, sort of what's the likelihood that the monument would fall prey to like Navy budget cuts at some point in the future? And if that did happen, and they weren't funding the refurbishment, would the town, you know, not be able to remedy the situation because we don't own it? So those are my two questions.
Well, the easiest one is if, if the Navy owns it, then the Navy is responsible for maintaining it. And History and Heritage Command in particular is the organization in Washington that is charged with the responsibility to do that. The good news is, both Senators and our local representatives showed up, so those are the folks who will be speaking on, on our behalf when the budget conversation occurs. I, I am not capable of forecasting the future about budget, budget cuts, and if I were to guess, I would be wrong almost certainly, but we have very strong support from History and Heritage Command. For example, the, when the, they executed the maintenance availability for the USS, for the Historic Ship Nautilus, they originally allocated thirty-six million dollars to get that done. Turned out that they executed more efficiently than they had, than they needed to, and therefore there was a little there was a little bit of money left over. That money was then applied to the refurbishment of the Flasher Memorial when the contract was cut and the, when the federal government paid for that. That is how it will work if the Navy has it now, which is not to say that there won't be a struggle and you may want to get it repainted on Tuesday and they won't get around to doing it until Thursday or this year or next year. But I think that it'll be a high enough visibility item that we'll be able to predict well enough in advance. And also the work we're going to do to, to remediate and refurbish the monument for the installation. As was mentioned earlier, Nautilus is going to be good for 30 years, so I would expect that this will be good for more than that because we don't have the river running by it and everything. So, uh, so I would, I would think that it would be a, a long-term forecast. Our budget, our, 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 our goal for fundraising is tagged to the foundation leaving several hundred thousand dollars to the town to sustain it in perpetuity. If it turns out that the Navy takes it, we'll still try to raise that same amount of money and we'll put it aside. And when we dissolve the foundation, which I expect to happen within a year or two of the monument being installed, we would leave that money in some sort of fund that the town would have access to. So that, that's the best I can answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions from councilors? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not, I'm assuming if I look at the chart, the rudder is the rudder. Is the sail the other piece?
Uh, yes, sir. The, it's a...
Actually, I probably ought to have you come talk about it.
Oh, could you use the mic?
Yeah, sure. Come on up. Sir, here's the man behind the thing.
So Chad Frost is here to talk to you about...
If you grab the mic off the stand, we'll be able to hear you.
To talk about the design. As now, for those of you who have been on the council for a while, you would have seen something very similar to this. If you haven't been to the memorial.
Counsel Franko.
Counsel Franko. There have been changes, but the overall design is the same. And if I could just go back one second to the maintenance issue, and we talked about that quite a bit when we met with the council a couple of years ago. And as, as John has noted, you know, one of the advan, this is not a whole submarine and it's not in the water. And, you know, we're anticipating that there's going to be very little maintenance that needs to be done on this. Occasionally, over 30-plus years, we're thinking it may need to be painted. There will probably be opportunities at that point to either tap into the endowment or to engage the local community for support. And just to remind, and I know Chad and John will touch upon it, this piece of land that we're talking about is land that the town has maintained since the mid-'70s. So, but it has belonged to DOT. It's been part of the state right-of-way and that's the purchase that John made, made mention of, that working with the council previously, there was agreement to go off and approach estate and John was very, very helpful in helping us accomplish that, to purchase this hunk of land that the town's been maintaining. And I think Chad will probably touch upon the elements of it. Pretty low maintenance. You'd still be cutting grass out there, but you've been cutting grass for 40 years. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Chad Frost, Chad Frost, Land and Architecture here. Very excited to be, again, continuing to be partnered with the USS Groton Memorial Foundation. Really quickly, for those of you that haven't seen the purple one, this is the full scale replica of the USS Groton. There you go.
Perfect. Ooh, that's much louder. So this is the, the full-size USS Groton along the frontage, so this is 117. The library's right over here. Thrive 55 where we're at is right above us. It fits pretty nicely, fits all the way through there. So to answer your question, Counselor Jones, this is the sail at the front. It's positioned correctly and accurately. This is an earthen berm that is the size of the entire ship. And then the rudder is accurately placed distance-wise to the back. And, and we kind of have, as you can see in the handout I passed around, we've designed it so that as people can flow through it, this main space here, we are calling the Design and Construction Plaza. That's where we're celebrating obviously the design and construction. There'll be interpretive signage. As you can see in some of the renderings, those are really crude, just kind of shape renderings that we have right now. They're not sexy graphics, but just looking at scale and massing, there is a retaining wall along the front so that we do get some separation from the road, cancel out some noise. And it allows us to have a really nice wall on the inside for all that interpretive signage to talk about the history of the, the design and construction. This plaza is about 50 feet in diameter, so it's large enough to hold good-sized groups for different ceremonies, both for the Navy and for the town. Then the walkway along here, we are calling that the underway plaza. So that's where we really do a lot of the celebration of what it's like to operate a submarine. This is intentionally, as you can see in some of those images, it's intentionally fairly narrow. The earthen berm is built up around it. You're walking through the earthen berm. That's meant to make so you feel a little bit kind of confined, a little claustrophobic maybe, kind of the feeling you would get in a submarine. It's also long and connected so that it's connected to the design and the operation. And then this, the rudder plaza is what we're calling the family garden. And that's where we celebrate the families here in Groton that are at home when the sailors are off to sea. And that, that walkway connects the two, but because it's kind of long and narrow, it accentuates that distance, still connected, but the, the separation. And then we really like the fact that it returns back on access to the library itself. And we want to celebrate the connection that the submarine industry has to Groton, both that it's a positive effect going both directions. And, and so that's really kind of the, the overall intent. There's some images in there again that you can look at. I think the first one is looking, as you're standing in the walkway, about halfway through, looking back towards the sail. The second one is kind of that bird's eye view over 117, looking towards the library. So you can kind of see how big it really is. The next one is if you're in the parking lot right outside on access with the sub, how, how large it is, you know, it will, it will be pretty big. It's 32 feet across. Next one is a higher aerial view so you can get a sense of the scale of both the wall and what that interpretive signage will be and how big the plaza space will be. And then the last one is the rudder plaza, the family plaza. Again, I, I'm not a submarine family. I've been down a few times to see them, but when you can be up close and personal to just the rudder, you know, and how massive that thing is, it's something that all of us that live in town don't get to often experience and it'll be a great amenity for all of us in-town residents, but also everybody that, that comes by. So that's my long story of what the design is.
So my questions are if the, if the Naval and Historic Heritage Command is going to take care of the rudder and the sail, is it the town's responsibility or the foundations to take care of the trees and the berm and that kind of thing? I mean, trees usually need maintenance at some point and the pathway, I mean, who takes care of that part of the, of the monument?
Well, there would be some money we would leave to support that, but things like mowing the lawn and stuff like that, I think would be the town's, what, what I would anticipate. And we will, because you, you mow it now, so it's not an increase in budget that I would, that I would think. And, um, so I, and as for the trees, to be honest, we, we expect them to last a very long time. And, and again, we'll, we'll have some money left behind and if, if, if...
It's a question that comes up a lot on, on different monuments around town that comes up to the council is, you know, what's the continual plan to, to take care of these things and make sure we have put enough, we've put in enough money?
Well, I could say if, if, if History and Heritage takes it, then that's, that's pretty much going to handle the whole, all the physical structure that Chad's group builds or designs and we build. If the, if the, if the foundation ends up taking control of it, then we will, we will have some money set aside. Before we dissolve the foundation, there will be some money set aside to address that issue in the long term.
Do you, can you tell us what your capital campaign goal is? How much money?
About $2.5 million.
And where are you right now?
Uh, we're, we've raised about $300,000.
Okay. And my last question is just on the, the land use applications that you have to do. Is there any, is there anything tricky in there or is this all pretty clean?
Uh, I've, I've been told by people who have done this before that we have a good chance of being successful.
Okay.
There is, we're anticipating two applications. One is application, a variance application because the, the sail is taller than eight feet, the wing, and that is technically a structure. So we would have, it, so it encroaches into the setback line, so we would have to get a variance for it. Nothing has changed. I mean, that's, we've all known where the sail was going to be placed and its proximity to the state right-of-way line, but that is one variance that we will need to get. And then we have to get site plan approval. And at the MOU, you know, the way it's written, because we don't own the property, we may have paid for it, but we don't own it. The town manager, the practice has been historically that the town manager would sign the application for the, for the various land use permits. So John's office will certainly be in the know as to what, what's going on.
All right. Thank you. I, I like all of what I see here. It looks great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Boardland.
Um, thank you. This is really exciting. I think it's great when, any chance you can have any type of historical artifact in town? I know there were some that didn't want it in this location. Could you speak quickly just why here and not somewhere else in town or what's the vision? That's my first question.
Well, we spent an awful lot of time looking at other places and there really aren't any that were, that were viable. And when we found, when, when this one became available and when it was determined that we were able to support, we were able to support the purchase by the town from the state, given, given the fact that it was in the right-of-way, we felt that it was, that was the best idea. Frankly, I, I haven't heard any pushback. I have not heard any pushback, not that I'm asking for it, but I, I, it seems to me that it's centrally located. It, it, it'll certainly be, well, the Flasher Memorial, for example, is really sort of out of the way unless you're, unless you're going to the Flasher Memorial. And we think with, with its location near the senior center and near the library and near the Dairy Queen, then by golly, this is a good spot.
Thanks.
If I could, I haven't heard people, I guess this isn't working either. I haven't heard people speak against this site. There were over 30 sites originally identified. And Rick Norris, who was here, and I, and other people worked on putting that group, that listing together. There were other sites that we pursued first, including up at the Bill, in the, close proximity to the Bill Memorial and the Groton Monument. That was one location down on Thame Street, Costa Property. They didn't work out for a variety of reasons. And then the foundation probably spent three or four years trying to situate the memorial towards the rear of the Flasher Memorial, really where the bridge, the old bridge abutment is. And we just were not able to move that forward with, with the property owner. So while there were other sites looked at, I'm not aware that people have, were against this site. It's just that other sites floated to the top first and for a variety of reasons were not selected. This has been on the list along with 26 or 27 other ones that we looked at, starting way back in probably 2013, 2014. And I think this, I think this is a, personally, I think this is, this has, this was always my preferred site, but I was probably a little biased being town manager at the time. But I, this to me is the civic center of the community between the senior center and the library. Route 117 has a fair amount of traffic on it. There are restroom facilities that, you know, are available in close proximity. There's an opportunity to maybe do special exhibits at the library and the senior center going forward. So I, I, once again, I have not heard people speak against this. It's just that there were three other sites that we looked at and pursued first.
Yeah. I'm not saying there was a, a ton, but I definitely would say that it would be bold to say no one is, you know, not wanting it there. I have heard folks who have, are in support of the monument but didn't like the location. And so that, that there are people out there. Not saying I'm one of them. I'm just simply saying that I'm being fair representative. I've had people contact me and stated why there, don't like the spot. So it has been stated. I do think it's really important that there is a fund and I hope that the, the Navy does pick up, you know, and able to help with the repairs. As we know, we had a statue out here, an indigenous artifact, you know, from an artist that, not an artifact, an indigenous artist, an indigenous person who created indigenous art that was well respected by the indigenous community. And the thing rotted before our eyes here in the town of Groton. So it is absolutely important that if we bring in structures and art, that they're valued equally, openly, and that there's funding there to make sure it's maintained. That structure was taken down because it wasn't being coated, rotted from the inside out. And last I heard, it was at the seaport. So it, it is very important that we have a fund to make sure that these structures are maintained and are available for, you know, many generations to come. And so I do like the idea of making sure we have all those checks and balances added into here and any support that we can have from the Navy would be great. I like the fact that you're, you're representing the, the families as well as all the, the workers and all the people who have served on it. So I think that's really awesome. I think it is important to, you know, preserve history when we can and make sure that, you know, folks, the town really looks like the Navy community that it truly is. And so it's, I'll hold for now. I think that was my other question. I was going to ask the same thing about the shrubs replacement. If things die out, there's got to be a plan to kind of put them back in and get them. So that's got to be very detailed since it's a living structure and it, things could die. So we would have to have replacement or else the structure would look really funny with half-dead trees. As we currently stand, we brought in a beautification committee. We were not funding under the previous councils. If something died in our town, they ripped it up and they covered the hole. So I just want to make sure again that that's not going to happen here. We have a lot of empty stuff, the town hall, and we've had a form of volunteer committee to spearhead beautification. So I'm concerned and just want to make sure that, that, that wouldn't go to the wayside is all.
Counselor's time's expired.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Gessery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is probably for you, Mr. Frost. Just how wide, out of curiosity, is that walkway?
Uh, it's about eight feet right now.
Okay. I just want to make sure like for ADA compliance, like...
Can you pass him the mic? He said about eight feet.
Okay. Just want to make sure for like ADA compliance that, you know, anyone in our community that's in a wheelchair or even strollers can access the walkway.
Hundred percent.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I've closely followed the progress over the years since the site was selected after a very extensive search, obviously, throughout the community as a former town manager spoke to. You know, this is, in my eye, a great site, easily accessible, plenty of parking, but, you know, really at the, the heart of Groton and nearby both the senior center, you know, frequently, frequented by subvets and certainly the, the library, which has a plethora of resources and, and, you know, and extensive research has been done there, you know, with respect to maritime history here in Groton and, and our naval history and heritage. So thank you for your, you know, I know, no one here, including yourself, or in the audience is getting paid to, to work on this. You know, you're volunteering your time and so it's certainly appreciated because, you know, this will be an asset that future generations will be able to enjoy in perpetuity. So my question is, you know, obviously it is appreciative that you have, you're envisioning that there is a fund created to, you know, for maintenance and in the future that way taxpayers don't have to expend those dollars. But I, I do believe in, in some respects, our, our town, considering it will be a town asset, has an obligation to support really in any way we can. Obviously, you know, you know, you're doing your private fundraising and that's to be encouraged and, and welcome, but, you know, you mentioned that you're taking stock of an inventory of pro bono work being done at the site. And so just kind of eyeballing the, the master plan here, you know, obviously you got the sail and, and, you know, the, the, you know, the greenery and, and, but, and the trees, but you also have pavers... you also have pavers, raised pedestrian crossing, kind of infrastructure that obviously will be a cost, but will be along the public right-of-way, the town property. And I don't want to get too ahead of myself, but do you envision that there may be an ask of the town to contribute kind of in some of those areas? Because in my eye, I think, especially given the fact that you have already expended dollars, you know, paid the state of Connecticut, which, you know, is notorious for selling properties sometimes for a buck. And here we are, you know, unfortunately, the committee had to pay, pay, you know, I believe a-
Ninety-one thousand.
There we go, ninety-one thousand to the state of Connecticut for-
For whose town?
To secure the, the easement, right? And so in, in some ways, it'd be, I think it should be helpful if, if the town, you know, kicked in in some respects. So, you know, whether it be, again, the donor pa, the pavers, the pedestrian crossing, or some other sidewalk work, do you, do you envision maybe the town could, could be able to help in that respect?
Our, our advertising and fundraising campaign, and part of why we are using the video is to try to engage the community to help. And if you, if you look at this card, you can take your cell phone and click and all of a sudden donate money. So we think we can get the community involvement as, as a substantial part of our capital campaign. We have, we will be reaching out to all the vendors within probably two hundred miles of Groton to include Rhode Island, New York, and Massachusetts. To, we will be appealing to those vendors who make pieces and parts that go into the submarine to, to contribute. Obviously, we've had some, we had a major contribution from Electric Boat, as appropriate, but, and, and our, our targeting for donors within the vendor base is going to be fairly focused and fairly direct. Our intent initially was to go ahead and make it a package deal. We, the foundation would present the package to the town. The two and a half million dollar number includes some money to give to the town to, to take care of it in perpetuity. And that would be money that would be in excess if, if the Navy, if by the, by the first of November, the Navy has agreed to transfer to History and Heritage, then that's just found money or we can either reduce, reduce what we have to raise. But, but we are very sensitive to the, to the, to the degradation that will happen over time. I don't think it'll rot, but, but it will be required to be repainted from time to time. But again, the paint job they did on Nautilus is going to be the same paint job we're going to have for the sail and rudder. And the Nautilus is forecast to last thirty years. So we're fairly confident that, given the lack of the wear and tear of the river, that this one will last fifty years, sixty years. I don't know. But we're, we're confident. And we're also confident that if there are minor touch-ups, you know, somebody bumps into it with a car or something, I don't know, but we could, we could fix it, touch-up. But the intent is to make that to be a, a no-cost event for the town.
Let's hope not, of course. But, but that, that's great. And certainly, you know, anything that, I don't want to speak for the council, but, you know, I know our council is very much involved in, you know-
Well, our intent-
Permitting the process to-
Counselor's time has expired.
Sign the MOU, so.
Absolutely. We very much want to be partners with the council going forward.
Yes.
And, and as, when, when we start the capital campaign, we'll take money from anyone who'd like to give it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McBride.
Thank you. This looks terrific and I'm sure this will be very successful, which leads to my, my, kind of my questions really. If this is extremely successful, I'm just wondering about the flow, of traffic flow over and beyond. This black line that's there, I'm assuming that's not a fence or anything. So my question is really, and I don't know how high this earthen berm is, but I'm just envisioning if this is very successful, will there be kids outside the, you know, the family garden or outside the earthen berm? I'm just concerned about, you know, overpopulation of those areas. Is there something you can do where we can put bushes in to keep them from coming onto the road or things of that nature?
Well, yeah, go ahead. The access is from the parking lot in, not from the road in.
I, I see that. The wall's, you know, two feet high. Kids, you know, just if this is very successful, you can see traffic flows over.
Yeah. We anticipate, so the, the wall is thirty inches high with a berm around it and the trees, and it's planted and landscaped. And this wall is upwards of five feet high. So we, we really expect most people to come across, walk through, and back out. We did not want to, we intentionally did not want to put up, you know, a four-foot, five-foot, six-foot fence and cage everything in. But we did intentionally design it with that wall so that it will contain people. You know, if somebody really wants to try to get up and run and go through, yes, you can. But the same would be true today if, if you're out there on the sidewalk and there's nothing between you and the road, or anybody walking down the sidewalk just going for a walk. So we have made this, I think, very safe for the public to use and encouraging people to stay within the bounds in a sensitive way that is aesthetically pleasing and kind of contributes to the experience.
Okay. Thank you. Just a follow-up on that. Do you envision lights and so forth at nighttime? And then are there going to be cameras for vandalism or anything like that?
There are lights. We have not discussed cameras yet, but we certainly can. But yes, uplights on the sail so that it is kind of glowing at night. We do have some lighting planned for down the walkway so that there's a soft glow coming out of everything so that you can see it. We really do want this to be a landmark, right? This, this is a placemaking feature. Anybody that drives down 117, you will see this once and you will remember it for a very long time. And so we want it to be visible during the day, but definitely at night as well. And so that if there was anybody walking through there at night, there's enough light that police driving by or something like that would clearly be able to see people in there.
Thank you.
Counsel Westerveld?
Thank you very much. Guys, I really think that this is an outstanding rendering, an outstanding opportunity for us to partner with this. Having spent time on a 688, I, it's a little nostalgic looking at that design there. It's pretty impressive. I, I really like it and I look forward to being able to, to help. And I do believe that it is going to be a landmark. And with the number of people who come, especially from out of town in the summertime, coming down 117, going down to Noank and Groton, Long Point and into Miston, a lot of people are going to see this. And I think it's going to bring a lot of people in to, to see it and to really enjoy that as a, as a spot to go. So thank you very much. You guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Boardland?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the, I, I agree, like, having something there as a fence or something would detract, you know, from the overall. But I will say, across the street where the youth football is played, I've sat out in that field and had a car, small fender bender, come right through the fence and right onto the grass right there. And the students had to go running away. There are ways, I'm trying to think of the one that I saw recently, I think it might have been in Chicago when I went out there to boot camp graduation. They had the nautical kind of coastal pillars, like you see out on the docks, the big thick ones, put into the ground. And they have them arranged nicely. They had the nautical-looking rope. Now, it's not going to stop it completely, but if they're spaced nicely, it could look aesthetically pleasing, but also serve as a barrier. Someone slides on ice, they're going right in. I mean, you know, a small fender bender, they will end up on those trees. I agree, you know, before people could be there, but now there's an attraction. There are drawing kids. And I, I mean, most of us who have had kids know, you have their aunt one here, Joey says, "Oh, look, wow!" And they're going to take a dart. I don't know if something can be there. I'm not saying it has to. I'm not saying my, my decision on if I like it or not would change. But there might be something to look into to kind of make, you know, those, those kind of big, round, thick things put into the ground evenly spread out, which would give it some decor, but also would possibly, you know, make it so that something couldn't drive right into that, or a kid could maybe stop a little bit. That's just one of my, my thoughts. But again, I think it's a really nice-looking design. Maybe on the other side, not close to the road, closer to the walkway, some, some benches would be nice. You know, I know sometimes parents, you know, want to take a seat and the older kid might want to walk through or something. So maybe a couple benches, which also might be another donor opportunity along there, which also links in with the, the library concept. To the left here where three and four is, there's a green area there. It'd be great because a lot of the monuments that I go to with my boys when they were little, we'd bring a picnic lunch, we'd find a bench and, you know, we'd have a grinder and then they'd go back through the monument again. So I just kind of think off to the, my right here, maybe some, you know, a few benches might be nice. And it would, something the, the library could use also. Don't know if you guys are funding it. Maybe something that the town can do. Just merely throwing out a suggestion or a thought that would make it kind of a place you could stay a little while. You wouldn't just run through it. You could then have a seat and, you know, relax a little bit, have something to eat, and then head in. Or a picnic table even over there on the, off the, off the side. My last question is, is how much are the donor bricks going for? Donor pavers?
Oh, we haven't, I don't think we've come up with a final number. It depends on the size. There's, Jim, do you know that?
Tentatively, we're looking at two sizes. Depending on the square footage that we have available, we're hoping to sell upward to a thousand. And it'll either be the size of a brick, four-by-sevens, or eight-by-eights. And because it is a fundraiser, if you, hypothetically, if you bought the eight-by-eight, we're contemplating the cost with some support, maybe from the town, that we can provide materials. Maybe the town can provide the labor such as they did for the veteran memorial blocks that we have out here now. Fifty dollars for the material and two hundred dollars goes to the foundation. So as you can see, if we sold a thousand blocks, it's two hundred thousand dollars raised just for the, for the blocks.
Thank you. And then my last question. Have you guys been able to contact any former family members or anyone that's served on this particular boat and maybe add them into your advertisement? Because I think it was really powerful at the Nautilus when one of the men spoke and then his daughter came up.
Counselor's time has expired.
Thank you. His daughter had come up and stated how she grew up on the Nautilus and it was just really moving. And so I don't know if that's a part of the plan. Thank you.
Short answer is yes. We've got, we're, we're participating. We have, we have a crew member, well, the second CO is on our board, George Emery, Vice Admiral George Emery. And in fact, in fact, one of the items we're auctioning off is his hard hat when they were in overhaul. So somebody will buy Captain Emery's hard hat. And then we also have a crew member who is active with the reunion group, who also calls in. He lives in Florida, but he calls into our board meetings. So I think we have a pretty good connection within the Groton family. Certainly, when the monument is complete, we will, it will certainly be a centerpiece for whenever the USS Groton has a reunion when they come back here, which would get them probably, they think they do them about every five years as a matter of routine.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I, um, I want to thank you so very much for this much anticipated update. I wish you all the very best on your endeavors raising capital funds, executing the applications with the remediation and all that you will face on the road to raising the Groton sale. I have spoken to many residents in the Chronic Bridge neighborhood about this very unique and distinguished memorial. And those that I have spoken with are very excited for this to be in their neighborhood, as are many residents. And this memorial makes me feel so very proud and I am beyond humbled to have had a very small part in the process. Groton will acknowledge all those involved with our local submarine production, their families, and those who serve in a very large way. And I cannot thank the foundation and all of you enough. As a town counselor, I will help raise awareness to the foundation's needs within our community the best I can. And again, I'd like to thank you all. And I think you have proven to come up with the most unique and distinguishable design that I don't think many other people would have popped up with for that sale. And as the experts, I thank you for all that you've done over the years to make this come about and many steps closer to actually happening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-on question to Counselor McBride's concerns. Mr. Frost, you had mentioned, Frost, you had mentioned about the, the wall is five feet high on the Starford side. And I'm just wondering about security concerns that even police driving by, there's a, there's a, a spot there in there where you can't see anybody. People, kids, many of them aren't five feet tall, they're smaller than that. But you could easily be under that wall, not being seen by police driving by or anybody driving by. You're pretty, pretty isolated in that spot on the, on the Starford side. So I just wondered if you've talked, just shown this to our local law enforcement, just to get, have them weigh in to say, do you have any concerns with that? I mean, you could flip that wall around and move it on the other side or just not make it five feet high because you really do have a hidden sort of spot there that, you know, and there's a lot of kids that hang around in that area. So I just wondered if you've thought about that.
So short answer is we have thought about it. The other short answer is we have not yet talked to the chief and done a detailed review of it. And so if security cameras are warranted, if they feel it's necessary, we can have those installed. And we do that in, in a lot of different municipalities. I would say we are very aware of, you know, creating blind spots in, in places where people cannot be seen. But I'd also say there's, you know, thousands of those along the road when you drive by, including on this very site. You know, you have the, the hockey rink just a few hundred feet away with all of its walls and multiple layers of walls. You have the buildings you can go around the corner. So those spaces definitely exist. We keep people out of those spaces generally by putting light in there and by allowing circulation on all sides. Because this is a public space and you can get cars going in and out, and if, if it really does become a problem, if something shows up or is left behind, you know, this would be a routine patrol for a while to make sure that problem goes away. You could easily pull into the lot, see all sides and leave. You can add a camera if that's really necessary.
You could also put slots in it.
You, you could. I mean, we, there's, there's a fine balance that we're always playing from a design perspective to try to make the effect and, and keep it safe at the same time. Much to Counselor Boardland's questions about proximity to the road and vehicles, there, there are safety distances that we know that if we're outside of that boundary, we're okay from most cars, right? Now, if somebody is driving a hundred and fifty miles an hour down the road, we, we can't accommodate for that. But for most vehicles, this is outside of that safety area. And in fact, DOT wouldn't, the, what you were mentioning around, those are bollards, right, with the chains between them? DOT wouldn't allow us to put them there because it's against their regulations that close, you know, in the proximity to this road. So we have taken a lot of those things into consideration. But as we go further into the design, we're right now just starting that, that kind of site plan detailed dive-in. That's when we'll have those conversations with the police and make sure there's, you know, any last little details get taken care of. Thank you.
Counsel Franco, is that another hand?
Uh, I'm sorry, no. But just to add, since I have my hands up and you called on me, this is, like, as was just said, there's all these questions being asked, but it has to, we've already passed this and it has to go to planning and zoning and all the land applications. So they're the ones who know all these regulations and they're going to implement these properly. So I think this was just an update to let us know where they are in the process, I think. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from counselors? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for your update and for all the work you do.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
On to Complete Streets Advisory Committee, page eleven. We have Director Hanover for this agenda item.
This is working?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. Well, it wasn't too long ago we were all here looking at the Complete Streets policy, which was passed unanimously by this council on August 2nd. And as part of that Complete Streets policy, section eight required the town council to appoint a Complete Streets Advisory Committee. The purpose of that committee is to provide guidance for the implementation of complete streets throughout the community. There's a number of items. They're all listed in the policy itself. Some of the details of what the, that committee is going to be doing, providing input on public projects, advising the town departments on, regarding- advising the town departments on regarding pedestrian and bicycle issues, review and make recommendations for long and short-term transportation plans, assist in the development and implementation of the Town of Groton Community Connectivity Study, assistant advised the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission with respect to the pedestrian and bicycle facilities. So tonight, it's really a discussion about what the council sees as this advisory committee. You know, the number of committee members, the term for these members, the makeup of the members, should it be just all citizens at large, should we have any groups representative? So it's really a discussion so that we can kind of get this committee assembled. So I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. I just want to make just one comment. First of all, I think the committee probably should just look like something very similar to the Complete Streets group that Counselor Baumgartner led. But what I will say, something that I don't want to be included in this group is, is an official ex officio from the council. I know we put that in the, the police accountability group. And from my perspective, all of us counselors are ex officios on, on this group anyway. So it doesn't make much sense to me to have an official ex officio in that sense. We're all ex officio anyway. So, so to put a member of the group as an ex officio specifically from the council, it just doesn't make much sense to me. But other than that, I just think the group should look very similar to the, to the group that Counselor Baumgartner assembled. Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd agree. I, I think any person is welcome to participate in our discussions, I think. Greg, certainly don't want to speak for you, but I think you can attest to the fact that the meetings that we held, as far as our working group was concerned, was very open and accessible. Really, any person could have participated in the discussions. And I would hope that the Complete Streets Advisory Committee would follow a similar wavelength and model, if you will. I will say though, that, you know, one, one thing that was incredibly helpful for our, for the committee was the steadfast participation from town staff, in particular, obviously Greg from Public Works. But also, we had continued representation from Parks and Recreation. And that, that was helpful. But I, I would also say that, and planning, planning and development as well. So I, I think at a bare minimum, while we may not have ex officio members, I do think as far as an ex officio goes in terms of town staff being involved, I do think there should at a bare minimum be four individuals involved from really four key areas. So, you know, obviously, Public Works, by virtue of the fact that they're responsible for maintaining our, our roads and highways, certainly the police, the, the police chief does chair, co-chair along with the town manager, the
Traffic authority?
Traffic authority, there we go. The traffic authority therefore, you know, whenever there is a change in terms of a stop sign or, or the, you know, the police department and the town manager is very much involved in that process. And I think, you know, as far as implementing these goals, it cannot be done without obviously the participation of, of, you know, certainly the chief and his team, Parks and Recreation, of course, and certainly Planning and Development. And then in terms of a regular membership, what I would recommend is five appointed committee members, say three kind of at-large with kind of any experience, but two that have kind of required experiences, which several of our boards or commissions already have. One who would represent, a member who has public health experience, and then a member representing a bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization. So that does not mean that you couldn't have several members of a group representing a bicycle or pedestrian advocacy organization in town, but at a bare minimum, one. And then same goes for public health. Certainly, you know, Legislite, they did opine on our Complete Streets policy and wrote in support of it and also participated in our, our hearing. So I think as much as this committee can reflect kind of the work that was already done and, you know, with the kind of a vision towards the future, I think would, would be advantageous to fulfilling the mission. So nothing further.
Thank you.
That is all. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Just a quick question actually to, to Counselor Baumgartner. I just, and my question was going to be just for you to tell us who was on that, that committee. I think you've given us most of the, of the people. So was it a total of nine people, basically? I'm just trying to get, what were you, what, everybody that you already worked with?
I can share with you the, kind of the regu, so Brian, Brian Kent, he chairs the Bike Groton Group, participated in every meeting, helped draft the document. Cindy Berry, Representative Legislite Health District, she, she attended every, every meeting. Tom Olson was the liaison from the Conservation Commission. Palzad was the liaison from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sim Eben was a liaison from the RTN Group. And obviously, you know, I participated, you know, just from, from council. As, you know, as chair, but we, we, a few other folks kind of came and go.
And from the Public Works and Police, there was it one person or two people that came from those groups?
Greg, Greg, Greg attended every meeting, kind of carried, carried, carried the football issue.
Yeah, we have Mark Barry from Parks and Deb Jones from Planning.
So roughly four, eight, sort of twelve-ish, eleven, twelve-ish people. Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of what, you were very successful in doing it. So just, you know, maybe repeating it, but just trying to figure out who are all the people. So that's certainly across, across the town.
I think maybe Greg mentioned it, Mark Barry from Parks and Recreation.
Okay, okay. That was my question, just how many, who were, who was in that group? So if you're going to just repeat it or do something.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. No, I'm really excited about this referral and what it could do for Groton as from a resiliency and a sustainability aspect. When do we think that our coordinator would be online, John?
Say that again? For resilience? Yeah. Just hired, just started.
All right. Would it be appropriate to add him or her, or they or them onto this particular?
Yeah, anything that's town staff should say as a point, you know, appointed by town manager to include these categories. It shouldn't include specific people.
Yeah. I just think it would be really important, I think, where we, we got really robust in, you know, claiming, you know, the need for the resilience and sustainability. And we went as far as, you know, funding a position. And I think this bicycle pedestrian part would be another avenue to have someone who's looking at ways to cut down on traffic and increase pedestrian walking and bicycling. I really think that they could have a, a strong voice around the table and be instrumental in maybe helping us portate in some way or give some feedback. So I, I would love to see that town staff member, you know, brought in around us if, you know, other counselors, so, you know, thought that that was applicable. You know, as far as other stakeholders, I, I mean, I think you did a pretty good job representing, I think, you know, with Sima on there as an RTN member, she also duly serves as an ocean, I forget her exact title, but she definitely is big with coastal as well and trails and walking. So I think she, she's great and many others that you've already gathered. It might be nice to get some youth voices involved, maybe see if there's anybody from the high school or anything, maybe put the feeler out to Mrs. Austin. It'd be nice because, you know, I think as we're building these things, we're, we're expecting, you know, we're trying to predict what our youth want in 20, 30 years. And this is definitely something that's been lacking. And I think it'd be nice to hear what they're thinking. I know, I can't speak for, I can speak for myself, in the neighborhood I live in, I was really shocked once I moved in about how I get from point A to point B and the lack of sidewalks to get there. Just to go shopping at CVS less than a mile, I could walk. But just getting there or getting to the airport, if I wanted to walk to get a beer at Beards, there's no sidewalk to get there, like I'd have to walk in the road. And so I just think we need people that are really invested in looking at all of that. And I think some, there might be some youth in our community that might want to come around the table and be involved in that. But other than that, I think you pretty much hit a large number of the people that could be represented. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, my question for you was going to be whether you would recommend us to actually add staff as members or to maybe just keep them as advisory so that they didn't have to come to every meeting? Because I'm worried about quorum issues too, and maybe if their area of expertise was relevant for that meeting, they could come in and they weren't actually, they didn't have to be members, they weren't required to be at every meeting.
It's up to the council, whatever you think. My one concern of being members is they'll be presenting to the, to the group. So it would have to, I don't want to have any issue. You might have two or three department heads involved in something and then, you know, they may have to abstain from an item, which could hurt, hurt having the proper number for, for voting on that.
Great. So it would probably make more sense to not make them actual members of the committee?
Probably, yes. It's going to be most of their projects that are going to be there.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Just a note, I, you know, actually, of course, my apologies. Actually, I'll, for discussion purposes, and so I'll make a motion to recommend the membership for the Complete Streets Advisory Committee consisting of five ex officio non-voting members. Those members being the town manager and/or his designee, I'm sorry, the town manager or his designee, the public works director or his designee, the police chief or his designee, Parks and Recreation Department Head, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation Director or his designee, and Planning and Development Director or his designee, as well as three at-large members and one member representing bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization, and one member with public health experience. So moved. Those, those five being the voting members.
Okay. So I got a motion by
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Right. Motion by Baumgartner, a second by Jones. Okay, so just for me, five ex officio members, town manager, designee.
I'm sorry, a point of clarification, not, five ex officio non-voting members.
Ex officio non-voting.
Yes.
Okay. So five ex officio non-voting members. I got town manager or designee, public works director or designee, police chief or designee, Parks and Rec Director or designee, planning director or designee. There's three at-larges and I didn't manage to get those down, so.
Yes, three citizens at-large, one member with public health experience, and one member representing a bicycle and pedestrian, pedestrian advocacy organization.
Okay. And then the other one can be any civilian.
The other three can be anybody.
The other three, okay. So it's five civilians at-large.
Any resident of the Town of Groton.
Okay, five civilians at-large and two have sort of a condition. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Like I said, I think my staff would be going there anyhow. I just don't want to get in the habit, the charter would require me to appoint them, not for the council to say, Greg appoint someone. So if we're including them as actual ex-officials, it's just say appointed by town manager for these general categories or whatever you want to say.
Okay. Appointed, what the town manager said.
Okay, so I have five, okay, so, so would this work, five members of the town staff appointed by town manager?
Sure.
And just a quick comment on that and not to put, you know, make the decision for the town manager, but I would envision, say, you know, obviously, the town manager, should he not be able to attend, then maybe that's where you would appoint the resiliency and sustainability manager to kind of serve in your place.
Yeah, I see that, her being there at every one.
Okay. So just to be clear to everybody, we have a motion on the floor. It's a ten-member group, five are citizens at-large, at least one should have public health experience and at least one should represent Bike Groton.
No, bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization.
Bicycle and pedestrian organization advocacy. And then you have five non-voting ex officio members, they will all be town staff and appointed by a town manager.
Point of information, where would, if you were trying to involve like a college student, UConn, or say a, you know, high school student, what section would you consider them falling under, just at-large?
At-large.
Or would you be allowing one of those to be open for a youth, younger constituent that has a different perspective?
In, in, in his original motion, they will be at-large. If you want to add another condition or something that will have to become as an amendment. Counselor Parker, do you have a, did you have a hand?
I did, but now I forgot the question, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
I don't want to increase it, I don't, I don't mind if you want to decrease by one, I will defer to Counselor Baumgartner, but I would love to just leave a spot. So we're adding it for like a young adolescent college or high school age, male, female, whatever, just so that, you know, we are trying to encourage the younger population to be on with a different vision. If we couldn't fill it, I mean, I guess we, you know, but I think by adding one, would, I'm not sure, am I able to ask Counselor Baumgartner his thoughts on that at all?
Sure.
Counselor Baumgartner, what would your thoughts, I mean, since you've worked on this, would it be decreasing or should I just add that as the?
I, I admired your interest in that and I, I think it's very laudable. I think in our intention, when, you know, when we appoint, I think that is a very strong criteria we should assess. I just worry that should we get a young person to step up and say that person leaves over time, kind of what happens where if there may not be somebody readily available to serve and now we're kind of pigeonholed where we have to meet a quorum, right? So I, I think in, kind of in, it's best that we, you know, if, once we establish this committee, we can say, you know what, let's, should a young person apply, that that person is, you know, obviously considered by, ideally.
So would it be appropriate then to add that in here? That we are like seeking youthful voices to be coming up, you know, like somewhere? And how are we, what's the process in which we're going to be, let's be part of a personal appointment type of thing or, or how will the people be vetted to go on here?
Yeah, it'll just be a standing group, just like all of our other ones, applicants will come through the town clerk and through the planning and zone, personal appointments and then to the council.
Okay. So maybe there might be a way then if we could just add, I'm not sure what the language would say, that we encourage, you know, college and high school students to apply?
I would note that Counselor Bordelain, you know, when just thinking about what the membership would reflect, that came to mind also, you know, having a, a place for, you know, a spot for a senior, a spot for somebody from the disabilities community. However, part of the reason I did not make that motion was because, again, we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves in the case where those, there isn't somebody readily available to step up and serve.
I just think if the language was there, it doesn't mean it has to be. It would be just more if that, if I moved to the town and I was looking to join a board and commission and I read the example of what you were looking for and I saw like actively seeking seniors, disabled and youth as a language, doesn't mean it's the criteria, doesn't mean you have to fill it. It would just be like, wow, maybe I, I know somebody that's young that's really active in this and encourage them to apply. I think a lot of times, you know, it's just, I mean, if you think it's fine like that, I just was thinking adding it in the language because in 20 or 30 years, if we're not doing this, someone else is not going to have your vision that you're thinking now. More adding it in so that it shows that we're, we're including them in this because the disabilities, the youth and all of that are an important piece of really this connectivity. And I just think it really just, just adding a line stating that, that's all I was thinking. But wouldn't be a requirement to fill.
No, no. However, we can, you know, obviously endeavor individuals of the, you know, who are seniors, youth, disabilities community to apply. And also, the mission statement slash, you know, the mission statement for the Complete Streets Committee, every board and commission town has one, and that can be obviously included within that mission statement as well. So I'm, I, I hear you, I agree with you. And perhaps maybe that's something the rest of the council can chew on and maybe opine on, but it's ultimately up to the council.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another question for Councilor Baumgartner. In, when you were talking about the, the working group that put this together, you talked about you had a conservation person, a planning and zoning person, RTM person, and there's also a chair somewhere in here and possibly residencies. But in the motion, we didn't, you didn't mention any of those groups. Is there a reason why you didn't put those on there? Are they, they do seem like they're valuable. Should they be included in it or just your thoughts on why you didn't put them into the permanent group when they might have been involved? And how would you bring them in? Because it does seem like some of those would be issues you would end up dealing with. How would you bring them in if you didn't put them in?
I do enjoy these, the free flow of discussion here. I want to make sure we're following rules, our council rules. But I, I guess my question actually would be opposed to the town manager.
Yeah.
I know in some, some of our boards, for example, like the beautification committee, I know in the, when Council Franco started that up, she served on the committee, as did Councilor Obray. And you also have some committees that are kind of liaisons, like for example, for the working group, the conservation commission liaised to it. Part of the reason I didn't opine on any of that was I didn't, wasn't, wasn't certain if, once this was actually an established committee, if members of other committees would be able to serve on this. So like how Council, Council Jones kind of alluded to.
They could, as long as they're, you just can't serve on two committees that are created through a legislative act. So you couldn't be on both the ZBA and the planning and zoning commission, that type of thing.
Like their state statute?
Yeah. But so as long as the two committees aren't formed per state statute, which is would not be. So yes.
So you could, you could invite them to come and participate?
No matter what, you could invite them to participate. But if you wanted to be a member, that's fine too.
That is permissible? Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure we're just including the right people and I just keep referring to Council Baumgartner because you ran a very successful working group. So I think, you know, you're the, you went through it and you're the expert on it and you, you had lots of reasons. So that's all. Okay.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I will allow councillors to ask other councillors questions, but then just, I'll keep your time running. Their answer will be part of your time. If you ask someone upfront, your, your time gets stopped. Council Parker?
So everyone can apply, the five civilians going through P and A. We didn't set a term limits in our motion.
That's right.
So my suggestion would be a two-year limit so that we give everybody a chance in the community if they want to be involved. And to, in any, one from the, any of the communities that was just mentioned, the youth, the elderly and disabilities, forgive me if I'm saying that wrong, I don't want to limit people, can go to all the meetings and be able to listen and maybe make suggestions. If there would be an email format that they can email suggestions to. So it's open to the public. Everybody can come and make suggestions. We don't want to limit ourselves to saying we need this person, that person, that person because then people won't apply. So I think we should leave it as an open-ended application process. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Burt?
Just throwing out there, if, just as an idea of maybe having three people go for two years and two one-years and then two years afterwards, just stagger it a bit, just an idea.
Thank you. Council Bordelon?
I was, I can agree with the town manager. That's what I was thinking because I think some of the committees that I think are, run more smoothly are when you have a staggered because you don't have everybody with all the expertise leaving at once. So if it is staggered, it can allow for a nice flow. And I think that was my, what was my other question I was gonna ask? Oh, will there be, in this language, would it include a, one of the things I think that's really worked really well with the, the committee I'm on currently, working with the other two fellow councillors, is that we always offer public comment at our meeting. Will this have a public comment? Because honestly, if that's included, then you can come and have your voice be heard and, you know, it just might be something in your neighborhood like, hey, you know, I just realized, when I just, in my neighborhood, I'm realizing there wasn't a sidewalk at those buttons down where, you know, the rehabilitation center are for, used to be the old Pfizer daycare. And why, it was great to ask, I just had noticed it. I saw people going all the way down to the crosswalk where there was no button. I saw buttons and no crosswalk. And there's a large traffic of people who walk there. So adding a public comment piece would allow for people to come and be included in the meeting even if they weren't on the committee. So I don't know if that's just automatically going to be understood or is that something the committee will decide or should we add that in the language that there also would be a public comment piece? So again, adding the stuff now also allows for in 15 or 10 years, there might be different people that are not involved. And it's nice to be able to come and speak to that. So I guess my question would be to Council Baumgartner.
That, that's a great question and I, I, I know in the past what we've done with some items on the council, even if not everything was necessarily fleshed out when we pass, vote, pass it out in the committee, by the time we approve of it on, as a council of the whole, during a regular council meeting, we have a fleshed out document kind of explaining those things. Maybe that's something the town manager can, and his office can work on until we approve it. You know, obviously contingent on approval from the council, but something we could approve at the regular council meeting, kind of fleshing some of that out.
We'll take a look at some of the other existing just to make sure we don't miss something like the term or anything. Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I think just adding in there like the staggered terms and we'll have public comment, you know, something very simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Franco?
Thank you. It was brought up the beautification committee and I created that with Councilor Obray and brought forward a proposal to the council and it, and it stated in there basically what was requested for who was going to be on, how long the terms were, things of that nature. And we passed this ordinance and it didn't have any of that information in there. And there's a lot of discussion here tonight and I'm not hearing like a really solid plan that came from that committee. Is there a possibility we just send it back to the committee and have them come up with a proposal that they recommend to us, actually stating what they want, the people that worked in that committee or what they thought? Because to be honest with you, I mean, there's 10 people, five at-large and then five ex officios. That's, that's a pretty large meeting every, every, will it be monthly, quarterly? And I'm not, and maybe they, they could come up with like an idea of, excuse me?
Nobody, nobody said anything.
I heard something, I'm sorry. And maybe they can come up with a recommendation back to the council for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Council Parker, is that going to be an official amendment, two-year term limits? And do you want the staggered, so you do two, two-years, three, one-year and then stagger them going forward?
Well, I would like that, but I, it does make sense for it to go back to the committee to have them outline what their total intentions were.
So you don't want to make that amendment at this time?
Not at this time. Actually, I'll make a motion to refer it back to Complete Streets Committee to come back with firm, more details.
Okay. I have a motion by Council Parker?
Casiri, second.
Seconded by Casiri. Question for Council Baumgartner. Can you reassemble your group?
It, uh, no promises. And I definitely respect the, you know, the reasonings for, for sending it back to get their opinion. I would note, however, that given that we, this still does have to receive approval at the council meeting, I would be happy and I'm sure others on the committee to talk to some of those committee members to kind of gain their insights. And then also they'll have the opportunity to comment at public, public comment, the, you know, just before we actually vote on this, should we pass it this evening. So I, I do think there will be ample enough time to get feedback while also moving forward. Something that way we can, you know, get the committee off the ground in a sooner timeframe. But ultimately, you know, it is up to the council. So because of that and I, I cannot support the motion on the floor, but I, you know, with respect to the suggestions that Council Parker recommended, I, I agree with all of them. I do believe, I agree we should have two-year terms. I agree that, you know, we should also have the staggered terms. And in terms of, Council Franco brought up an important point just about how often the committee meets. Director Hanover, I, if you can recall during our discussions, this came up and it would have, the meetings would be based off of when a project would come before, you know, when there is a project ready to, you know, shovel's ready to hit the ground and you wanted to seek guidance from the committee, if that's correct. That would be an instance where they would seek guidance from the committee whenever there is a shovel-ready project.
That's just one example. Yeah, I could see them, they're also going to be looking at site plans, subdivision plans for the planning commission, maybe commenting on those. There might be some other transportation plans they'll be looking at. So I could see them probably meeting monthly on a regular basis.
Okay. All right. So we could, you know, create it as a, as standing and obviously when you're just having a standing, you can always cancel a meeting if there's no business. So make it one month. And then just in terms of the one thing we forgot to include was most committees do have alternates, not every, but some do. And what I'd recommend is just having one just regular at-large member. And I think perhaps in the vein of what Council Bordelon suggested, is having a member that reflect or reflects the youth, seniors and/or disabilities community. So that's kind of a catch-all, you know, so that really could include probably 75% of the town. But that shows our intention to include, you know, somebody representing those viewpoints. And in the vein of what Council Parker stated, you know, especially if it's a youth, that person won't be a voting, you know, a regular voting member. So they can still participate in discussions and offer their experience, you know, but if need be, you know, obviously if there isn't a quorum, be able to participate as a voting member if there aren't enough people.
Counselor's time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bordelon?
Okay, so we, we have a, I just want to make sure we have a motion on the floor to vote on moving it and sending it back to committee. Is that correct?
That is, yep.
So if I wanted to make a motion, a motion amendment, I have to wait for this one to go through or I can put it on now?
Yeah. So if you want to amend the, the first motion, we have to vote on this first and then you can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Franco?
Thank you. I also think if you're going to be putting in language requesting youth or seniors, I think you better check with maybe HR or our attorneys because there are protected classes and even if you are, just say, 40-year-old female, you are a protected class. And to say you either want to be a senior or you want to be youth is sort of, it's discrimination. So I am not in favor of any kind of comments in there to say whether you want seniors or youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. With, with regards to the motion on the floor, Director Hanover, I guess my question is how urgent is this committee to get formed at this date? Because that's going to sway my decision as to whether or not this gets moved today or whether it can get moved in a month from now.
I'm, I'm sure it could wait a month. I don't see any urgency that has to be done tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it would just be really unfortunate if we at least didn't give the committee members that worked really hard on this an attempt at having a say on how this committee looks. So I will be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote. And we, just to be clear, we're, we're voting on whether to send this back to the Complete Streets Temporary Committee to ask for their guidance on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. So we're gonna carry seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining. Baumgartner, Bordelon. Thank you.
I'll reach out to the, the committee. We'll set something up in the next couple weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Groton Ambulance Lease 2022, page 19. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving an extension of the lease with Groton Ambulance to September 30th, 2025 while continuing the $1 per year lease rate. So moved. Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner.
Mayor Burt?
Just to mention, if you may recall, Chuck Knickie, the president of Groton Ambulance visited the council, I believe it was February, I think it was, where we made, where the council made that change to a dollar. But this is just keeping all the terms the same and keeping what the council approves. I think it was actually, yeah, back in February or March.
Thank you. And I would just, I just want to say I'm extremely supportive of this. Previously, there was a not-so-nominal rents being paid by the Groton Ambulance and this council changed it back, back to the nominal $1 a year. And I, I'm very supportive of that decision and I think we should keep it going. Council Jones?
Question, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for the town manager on, in section five, part A, it's sort of the list of all the previous amounts for the leases in 2018, 2019, 2020. Does that paragraph need to still be in here?
Yeah. What we do is like a one-page, like an add-on, like we, just like we've had two other, one or two other add-ons to it. So it's just like, the last one was so simple, it was a one-page add-on renewal.
So even though it's?
We don't change the original, because that, that's what was originally passed.
Okay. So even though it's?
It's a renewal. If we were gonna, if we were gonna start a brand new, a brand-new lease, we would, but we're actually renewing it.
So that's how leases like this works? So even though this is kind of old news and doesn't apply to anything anymore, you don't clean it up, you just keep it and?
Because that's what was passed, yeah. Unless we, let's say we saw something that no, just no longer applied, we would mention that and then we'd all enter, you know, we would say something like, you know, keep all the parameters the same but, and remove paragraph five, whatever, from, you know, that's usually how it's done. I've seen that done often.
All right. I just didn't know that was done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Council Bordelon?
Thank you. So based on this lease, as far as the repairs, you know, can you break down exactly what we are, how you would interpret what we are responsible for and what they're responsible for?
I believe, let me look up, I believe they're responsible for internal, we're responsible for the, anything outside, including the exterior of the building.
So it kind of almost works out like a condo owner?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, that's very similar.
And what about plumbing and piping? Is that us or them?
That's typically them, though everything's been pretty recently redone, so it's in pretty good shape right now.
And you think the dollar is a fair amount?
Well, the council just, I'm sorry. The council just drove to get, to provide more money to them. So then if you increase that, you just take away from the other. So, you know, it's kind of, you know, Rob Peter to pay Paul type of thing.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, some members of the council did. I mean, I, I can speak for myself, I was in favor of a raise, but I think what was the percent raise that we had given them? Over the 50-something thousand? It was like?
It was significant. I forget offhand what it was.
Like a 300 or 400%, wasn't it?
Something close to that.
Right. So I just, I don't know. I, I just, why have a lease if you're only going to put a dollar in it? I don't know. It's just, is that just to make sure you have a lease? You have to put a number in there?
Yeah, you need to put a number there and I believe that's what we do with TVCCA, if I remember correctly, too. I mean, it's a reasonably common practice to do that. Unless you do want to charge more. It's kind of when you're basically donating space for that, for that usage, like TVCCA, you put a dollar in, unless you want to charge them more. Unless you want to charge them more.
Right. I just, I don't know. I, I think it's great and it doesn't, you know, detract from the service they provide. But, I mean, I think the lease amount should be comparable to the maintenance and upkeep at least. You know, we're providing a building at next-to-no cost. And, you know, a few hundred dollars is really not, in this day and age, is not a lot, considering what it costs the town to maintain it. I don't know. I'm torn by the amount and the way that the lease is kind of. Now the, you said we maintain the outside, but we also have approved money for insert interior structures like plugs and things, didn't we? Adapters, for like, for the-
We did something for the generator.
Right. That was inside, right?
Right. Which was not, that was not required under the agreement. But the council at that time chose to, to spend the money on that after receiving a request.
Gotcha. Okay. So we do also, on top of that, fund any requests on the inside that we feel are necessary. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm not, I'm not a fan of giving a lease for a dollar if it's not going to, you know, consider, what Counselor Borlon said, cover the maintenance of certain things. But I think the bigger picture, the cost of running your ambulance, running an ambulance department would be significant to the town. So I think although it's, I think we can't look at it as a vacuum as we're giving it to them for a dollar, they're providing a significant benefit to the town and therefore I'll be in favor of this. Because the bigger picture, I think it makes sense for the town to utilize this ambulance organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Care is unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a short recess, please?
Yes. 10-minute break. We'll return at 8:35.
Thank you. Recording stopped.
The council's back from recess at 8:36. We are on to personnel and recruitment updates.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Welcome. Director Green.
I'm gonna go through, obviously you have the Request for Council discussion, so there's a couple of things. We have some job description updates, some compensation updates, and also some additional tools to help us remain competitive as we are in this very different job market and currently looking for at least one executive level position of Finance Director. So I put in order in your packet the original job description and on the majority of them I highlighted in red for your ease, the change in the updated job description. So I will just run through those unless anybody has any other requests about the order to review. Right. So I'm gonna start with telecommunicator. There wasn't a major change in here, really. It was the experience change. And that's part of our way of looking at openness, being competitive, being welcoming to the candidate when they read something and realize that they can apply. So this institutes a GED or High School Education and some basic job experience. And it still maintains the fact that we prefer a couple of years of public safety experience, but it doesn't mean you can't learn it if you don't have the aptitude for the job. So this is really trying to enhance our candidate pool and we can assess the abilities in a different way. Next you have Police Captain. And there's a couple of changes in there. As far as duties, I'm really outlining what's happening in real time because many of these job descriptions are at least 15 years old. So it's bringing it up to speed and really reflecting what is ongoing in the department. There are a couple of changes throughout, again, to duties or qualifications, bringing it in line with the other executive level for having experience in a police department, at least 50 or more members or higher. Change and adjustment to the years for rank and the number of years. And this is important as we're looking all of these to consider succession planning and are we making it available for current employees? Because obviously, if we can, as many organizations, we'd like to grow from within and grow our staff. So this is keeping in mind, again, what threshold are you setting it at? And is it open to everyone? That was really the major change for myself in that one. Deputy Police Chief again has some duties changes, recognition of the level of work that is going on. I am making sure to add in senior leadership positions, a nod to DEI. Because if we are going to be about it, we should make sure that we have it in the leadership titles to recognize that it is important and it is part of the duties for everyone. So you'll notice that in the classification overview for some of the leadership. This also recognizes the great work that the Police Department is doing towards their clear accreditation, which you've likely heard about. And there is a tiny tweak to the qualifications. Again, not changing the overall years, but just changing how the ranks are allowed for within those years. For Police Chief, you will notice I did not highlight in red the new one because there was so much new in there. And it really is bringing it up to the standards of what is going on current day and giving recognition to the level of an executive level position and a Police Chief position in any town. Title updates, the addition of public safety, as well as, again, just bringing it up to current day standards. There is quite a bit in here that is new, but it really is reflective of the responsibilities and duties from this leadership position. I'm not gonna go through everything because, again, most of it is an update. And we are also, as you'll see, I will intersperse the conversation in the packet seeking to adjust the compensation of the position of Police Chief as well. And again, you can see, looking at the job description, really it's reflective of what's going on and what is the expectation from this level of leadership. And you'll note in your packet, that's the reference to the $160,000 change per annum. Director of Finance, we are still in the recruitment process for that. And that really prompted some conversation, not only to take a look at the job description, and you'll note the DEI is added in there, as well as some of the other duties and highlighting the leadership experience needed for this position, but we're also looking at recruitment tools that we have available. And if we're going out multiple times per position, we really are competing against the other municipalities. I lately have been using the CCM job posting as a very informal witness test. I can recall 10 or 15 years ago, you were lucky if you saw 10 or 12 positions on there. There's been upwards of 10 positions on there throughout 40 to 60 in the last few months. So we really are all in the state competing for the same comp by pool of candidates. So that comes into play, the request to update the top level salary of the Finance Director and also institute some additional tools, should we need them, at our disposal. That would include bonus, if possible, hiring bonus. It would also include moving expenses if that was needed. And again, my suggestion with that would be for that to be graduated. From the fiduciary aspect from a town, you don't want someone to take that and go, but you would give it out in portions and forgive it over a certain amount of time. Additionally, thinking about the recruitment of this position and other non-union positions, having the ability to hire above what we have as a line of demarcation for the hiring rate. Right now, that is 15% above the minimum. But in order to be competitive and to be agile when you're in the middle of doing job offers and competing with folks who things can change in a day sometimes, when you offer a candidate a position, really having the ability to go beyond that 15% because we need to take into account the kind of folks that we're seeking and the type of experience levels that they have. So that is another suggested tool, so that we are trying to stay afloat among all of the other towns that are looking for some of the very same positions and the very specific experience request. Same positions. And the last job description we have is PC Network Specialist 2. And this, as you can see, is really bringing it up. And so this decade with some of the duties that we wanted to make sure were there so people were aware what we were looking for and we were doing a good job in that recruitment process. Speaking of peak, I think we've covered all of the job descriptions. We've covered, I believe, the recruitment changes, as well as the compensation changes. Does anyone have any questions?
Just before then, I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution making personnel and recruitment updates whereas the Committee of the Whole met on September 13, 2022, to discuss suggested changes regarding personnel matters. And whereas the Committee of the Whole made a recommendation to the Town Council to update current personnel matters, remain competitive in the employment market and to utilize additional tools for recruitment. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council hereby authorizes the Town Manager to approve and enact the following: Update job descriptions for the positions of Chief of Police/Public Safety, Deputy Chief of Police, Police Captain, Telecommunicator 1, Director of Finance, and PC Network Support Specialist 2. Award Moving Expenses for Non-Union External Hires with 50% of the cost given after one year of service and the remaining 50% of the cost forgiven upon the completion of two years of service as appropriate. Award Assigning Bonus for External Non-Union Hires awarded in multiple portions during and at the close of the probationary period where appropriate. Allow the Hire of Non-Union Employees Above the Maximum Entry Rate in the Applicable Salary Range where appropriate. Award a Compensation Adjustment to the Chief of Police in the Amount of $167,000 per annum effective October 2, 2022. Update the compensation maximum for the position range for the Director of Finance, $148,090, so moved.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri. And I just wanted to start by saying that I am 100% in favor of this motion. Every time I talk to the Town Manager or Department Head, I hear about how difficult it is to fill vacancies or keep the employees that we have. Because government is a very competitive industry. And in towns, when they can't find employees to fill their vacancies, they go start looking at other towns. So it happens all the time where we'll lose someone and then we have to hire someone else and pay them the same rate or more that the person who left. So I think it's very important to update as we go along to keep the people that serve our community and do it so well. So for those reasons, I am supporting this motion. Counselor Parker?
Just a, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Procedural question? Were we supposed to do the Committee of the Whole motion first and then go to the second motion for the town recess? Or did I miss stuff?
I thought you were just pulling in details off that, off the cover page. Did you read the resolution?
Yeah, I read, yeah. I see what you're saying. Hold on. I think we could do, I could think we could do the more detailed one for both.
Well, because one is a recess part to the Town Council's approval. The other one is...
He did it as a motion, though, not as a resolution. I mean, if he wants to make it as a motion. Or else he could just do the simple one that's in there.
All right. I just question procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Not seeing any hands. Counselor Bordelon?
I just had a question about the updated compensation maximum for the position range. On the motion that you read, what's the current compensation?
For which thing?
For...
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
For the Director of Finance, the current max range is 134,627.
And could you just keep going with the other ones, if you don't mind?
What other one?
And this list, the positions we're touching.
Sorry about that. The, there's also for the Chief of Police, what's the current?
One second. Chief of Police current is 141,731.
Thank you.
And just, and just to mention, these are, the Police Chiefs currently are top position. The Finance Director's next. I anticipate we'll be looking at all positions over time. But to do the finance, we need to do these two as part of that. And we're plugging away, our, excuse me, Director Green has been plugging away, working with CCM and others and other ideas for recruiting, so I anticipate she'll be back in the near future.
And so my other question would be, so it says effective October 2nd?
Correct.
2022, so then that would be an automatic raise?
Correct.
In a non-budgetary time? Is it, does it, I mean, I'm not saying it shouldn't go up. I just, I guess I'm tasked with making sure and being fiscally responsible. As the director position, there's nobody in position. So I could see where we would have a range, maybe where, you know, Cindy left off and, you know, with a max of 148, depending on experience. But I guess, is it, I mean, what depicts that we do an October's effective date? Or how does that work?
It would get approved on the 4th, but to make the pay period to coincide with the pay period would be October 2nd.
Why wouldn't it be effective in our budget year?
Anytime we've ever done other pay stuff, it's been basically just passed once they do it. Because it's anticipated the Police budget will be able to accommodate.
I'm just trying to, like I said, I'm not downing it, I'm just trying to understand. So under the director position, there's nobody there. So it would make, I mean, we'd be hiring in a range between the 134 and the 148. But I guess my question would be, not that I'm saying it's not deserving, not saying, you know, there's no criticism here whatsoever to be applied, fiscally responsible side. As a taxpayer to the town, we voted on budgets already and this number, you know, makes more sense to be voted on during a budget time. So I'm just, I'm just kind of, and it's, I'm just kind of looking at the effective date as my one concern. So it's, you know, other people would say, I guess, like, let me take this mask off. Other folks could say, like, in my job, if three people's contracts randomly got reviewed, right, and updated, which is beautiful, and they benefited from a raise, I would be in the other departments going, well, why didn't my position get looked at yet? Because I want a raise too now, effective October. So, you know, as we go through them, should we be making the effective date in the budget year?
I would say no, just because the Finance Director, we need to have that to recruit. And the Police Chief's position is above that. I wouldn't bring somebody in above the Police Chief. We need to reflect what the salary should be.
Right, but the person, the position's filled. So if there's a position filled already, my concern is that there's no urgency. So if you're making page changes when the position's not filled, I can see the 134 to 148 range, right? Someone who maybe has some great experience, but they might, you know, you might negotiate with them at 144 with a max of 148. We have a position filled, and I could see that being effective. We're not, unless he's planning on vacating in the next, by October 2nd, and we're trying to make sure that we have the max cap on here. I'm just not sure how that works. And I'm not saying that no one's not deserving. I just think that it's more fiscally responsible to make the effective date within the...
Counselor's time's expired?
Within the, you know, the budget year, if there's, we're not actively looking to hire right now in that position. I'm just curious.
Again, this would be standard practice. The Police budget can easily accommodate it. I would not bring somebody in in finance above what the Police Chief makes. So it's really, to do that is incumbent upon also changing that. And we haven't, we need to have the raise in the finance. So we need to keep each position and their relative position in the list.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
I appreciate Portia's comments. I'm John, I appreciate your explanation for the number one slot, number two slot. So that explains why the increase. I guess, just for more clarity, are you able to provide some comparable Police Chief salaries out in the, out in similar markets, just so we have more comfort in that number? I'm familiar with the Director of Finance numbers, so I'm comfortable with that number. But is this range of, what is, what's the number, 167? Is that, can you have some comparables of how that falls to, you know, Norwich or New London or Hartford or anything like that, just so we feel more comfortable with that number?
I'll let Director Green elaborate. But what we've run into is people are in the middle of changing position things as they're trying to recruit. What we're trying to do also is to keep people, rather than, one of my directives to Director Green is, rather than, let's not wait till someone leaves the pay to where it should be, let's do it to... And everybody's in that boat right now that they're working through that. But Director Green could elaborate, if she has anything to elaborate with.
Thank you. So true to what the Town Manager has said, the CCM salary surveys that we utilize, they are due actually to be coming out, I think, in the next month or so. So each member of town participates and puts the salaries in. So the data we have now is at least a year old. And it's not reflective of what's happening in real time in this job market. I'm sure you can just look around and see, in the last one to two years, it's really insane from a recruitment perspective what's going on, even in public sector, because I know there is a difference, and it's seeped over into public sector despite the number of positions that are out there and the tight competition for everyone. And I also think it's about recruitment, but it's also about retention. So if we're looking at how are we enhancing recruitment, how are we bringing folks on, how are we making position X, whatever it is, enhanced? We have to look at those who are around it and adjust appropriately. So that is, from my perspective, a sense of urgency when we're thinking about our staff, our morale, our ability to attract folks and ability to keep folks, that we are taking action, we are appropriate if we can. Again, just echoing the Town Manager and Green.
Okay, well, thank you. I completely understand the market, how difficult it is to retain people. So thank you for that explanation.
Any other hands? Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, just more of a policy question, perhaps it's best posed to the Police Chief, just with respect to the updated Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Job Description, a new addition for the Deputy Chief in terms of responsibilities, managing the professional standards arm of the department and overseeing and directing and conducting internal investigations concerning members of the department for alleged or suspected wrongdoing, as well as the task of may issuing discipline or direct, or provide education to any member of the task force responsible for all internal and external complaints received by the department and will intercede in matters where citizens are bringing concerns of urgency to the department, feeling a need to speak with someone in high authority. Is this something that the Deputy Chief is, you know, already doing in conjunction with the Chief? And if not, does this mean that this will, I guess, no longer fall in your, under your purview, Chief?
It all falls under my purview, but some of those duties are delegated. He does serve as the Professional Standards Commander. So when there's a complaint that comes in, they go to the Deputy Chief's office. If it comes to me, I route it to him. He assigns it for investigation and takes it on himself. It codifies the things that we've been doing. We've been instituting best practices and complying with the Police Accountability Bill, as well as previous state law and, like I said, best practices. So it does comport with what we were doing, but enhances that and codifies it in this job description.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones, did you have a hand? Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. So also, I just was looking at the median income for, you know, Finance Directors, without looking at the topography, but it encompasses, you know, multiple municipalities. And, you know, for that, you know, some of my notes come back, you know. I mean, it seems like Financial Directors in some towns are making more than the Police Chief, and folks are okay with that, so it is happening. It's nowhere stated, is it something in our charter that states the Police Chief makes the most in the town?
Well, we've gone through the process before of consistently putting that in the top of the list as the highest...
I never been privy to that, so...
You've seen the non-union list before. But anyways, we've gone through the process, so we won't change it at this point.
Yeah, because I'm sticking at the median income for a Finance Director, you know, ranging a medium of 201 in some areas, anywhere from 168 to 239. And the Police Chief mediums are coming back, depending on the town, you know, lower than that. So I just...
Imperative.
I'm, you want me to finish, or?
Sorry.
Okay. I'm just, like I said, I'm not trying to, see, I just don't think, because one's vacated and we're moving up the Financial Director, which I think is actually extremely low, that, you know, it's warranting to, because the reason that this position should be the top. I just, I, once again, not saying no one is not deserving. I just have concerns with that. The rest of this, I think, is as great, the initiatives. I love the fact that Mrs. Green put in the GED counterpart under some of the job descriptions, being more open and diverse to people who have work experience that are not necessarily college degree. There's a lot of people that are workforce trades, coming out of technical schools and things like that. So I think that really, that change is, you know, very appropriate and very, much meets the time. I am having trouble just moving a number because one's moving a number. I just need a little bit more than that. And so I, when I'm looking at the mediums, I'm just, and again, not saying that no one's not deserving, but I also am concerned about other town staff that, right now, are not coming before us and are getting that same bite because their income didn't, you know, fall at the higher level. So if I decide to vote no on this, it's because I can't break it apart. I'm in full support of moving the Financial Director up. I think the Police Chief line, obviously, I think there's a raise that should be there. I'm not sure what it should be. I just can't support the whole motion as written. I would, I could vote on it in pieces, or I would abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Burt?
And just to mention, I neglected, I forgot the, and Chief Saro, can you remind me what PERF stands for? There's a PERF study from, it's probably last year's data that shows the, we were looking at national average of 167,000. That's part of what we were focusing on to try to be, now, it's a little behind the times, but that's sort of where we were looking at. And Chief, feel free to elaborate.
PERF is, it's, sure, PERF is the Police Executive Research Forum. It's a national think tank for law enforcement executives. It publishes many documents throughout the year related to the profession. And that was one of their recent reports.
Thank you.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor.
What's your motion?
I can respect the fact, I don't think there's an urgency to change. I know in my own work field, there are people that may...
Counselor Bordelon? I just need your motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry. My motion would be to move the October 2nd, 2022 to our budget date, John, which would be what?
To July 1st next year, including the Finance Director?
If that's, if you think that would be, I mean, I think the Finance Director, I mean, when I'm looking at the median income for the Finance Director, it's quite high.
Is there a second? Okay, not seeing a second.
Second for discussion purposes.
Seconded by Counselor Baumgartner, so just to be clear, this all remains the same. You just want to change effective October 2nd, 2022 to July 1st, 2023. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So I just think that it's great. You know, if Cindy hadn't vacated, then we probably wouldn't be doing this necessarily. The other updates and incentives are wonderful. But I think that we should be being responsible with taxpayer dollars and making sure that we're being fiscally responsible and taxpayers are not expecting this transfer of funds. And it should happen during our financial... are not expecting this transfer of funds, and it should happen during our financial time when we work on our budget. I think that's a great time, and we just can run with this document and change the date. I do have trouble, just because, you know, we want to increase the financial, now it depicts at another line. I mean, I, I know at my job, we couldn't do that, it just wouldn't fly. There are people that have been in jobs longer, that come in with more experience, and depending on the job, just on the market, like, for example, you know, nurses in one field may make a ton of money, and another nurse may come in. It has nothing to do, it just has to do with, like, the trend of that position at the time. Certain positions will pay more than other positions, and that, that is the nature of the beast. And so, anyway, I could support it as it is, but I think it should be moved to during the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Green, didn't you state in your opening that the numbers are really moving, you know, that the numbers aren't relevant from the past year because they're moving so quickly? Is that correct?
Correct. Not only is it a year old, but what's happened during the last year is really quite extraordinary, so I'll be interested to see what they come back with when we do the next salary survey.
Great. So anything being looked up right now is probably not relevant to the current, you know, status, correct?
From what I looked at, the CCM salary survey, it is a bit behind, yes.
Thank you. And raising the finance director's salary is going to make us more competitive to find a new finance director? Is that fair to say?
Very fair. At times, sometimes there's three or four of the same position out there at the same time for different towns, whether close to us or far away, so there really is an open slate for candidates for a choice. So what we can do to make ourselves appealing, and so they'll come in and then love us for the culture that we have, is getting people in the door and doing what you can to broadcast your competitive stand.
Great. Thank you very much. And Chief, I know this is kind of a very broad question, but is it fair to say that policing has changed extremely in the past 15 years since your last update on your employment description? Is that fair to say?
Yes, that is fair to say. We've also, our department has increased responsibilities with the merger of emergency management and communication center as well, which are some of those things that are reflected in these job description updates.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner.
Yes, I'd just like to clarify how the finance director with the updating the compensation maximum would be impacted by the proposed amendment?
I'm sorry?
How, how the proposed amendment would be, how would it, would it impact the compensation maximum for the position range?
Well-
For the Director of Finance?
So as, as the amendment reads, it would not affect it. That effective date was only for, right after the police chief.
So it would have no impact? So I was curious as to what the issue was in terms of recruiting the, the next Director of Finance, should the amendment be successful?
Are you reading that the same way, Manager Burt? Are they together, the October 2nd, or?
Let me look at it.
So, just to clarify, the October 2nd, I just used a future pay period date. The finance director is immediately, I'm in the middle of recruiting, so I need that changed so I can move on with recruiting.
As long as they're not saying October 2nd, authorizing that for both positions.
Right. So October 2nd is-
I did attempt, was the police chief, if I'm correct.
Right. So unaffected, Director of Finance would be unaffected by this motion.
And in either way, though, due to, and Manager Burt, due to the fact that Director Landry did retire at the, literally, the day of, the first day of the fiscal year, I imagine there would be funds available?
Not necessarily. There's not going to be an issue with the police one. There could be with the finance, potentially, in terms of, she's needing vacation time. The vacation time goes through, like, the end of October. And so, and there's also the payout of it, there's partial payout for some sick time, like a third payout, so there could, and they have a very tight budget. Police budgets, you know, a large budget, finance is incredibly tight, so there could possibly, it's hard to, it's hard to, when we get someone, there could be a little bit of a transfer for finance, but I don't anticipate one for police.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote, and just to be clear, first, we're voting on amending October 2nd, 2022, to July 1st, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm-
Okay. All right. So I've got two in favor, Baumgartner, Bordelon. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that's going to fail. Two in favor, Baumgartner, Bordelon, seven opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the main motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
I abstain.
Stain.
Carrie, seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Bordelon, McBride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is it adjourned? Is it adjourned?
We have to, sorry, we have to do the, we have to pass it again.
We gotta do the, we gotta do the resolution. We have a special-
That was my procedural question, because he read it as-
That was, that was just a, as a motion, though. Now we have to actually do the resolution.
I will withdraw my-
Okay. So the council will be recess at 9:09?
And Clerk McCauser, if you hear on Zoom, I'm trying to, she's on as attendee, I've been having trouble promote you, so I continue to try, but she is on there, listening.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
One second. Okay, so I'll call to order the Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, Town Council Special Meeting to order at 9:10. Clerk McCauser?
She can hear. She's got permission to speak.
Clerk McCauser, you're muted if you're trying to speak. Just, just for the roll call, I could do it if, if you need.
No, she did say she made step away, so she might have stepped away.
Okay, I can do, I can do roll call. All counselors are present, so there is a quorum at 9:10. Onto new business, personnel and recruitment updates.
I can read it, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution making personnel and recruitment updates, whereas the Committee of the Whole met on September 13th, 2022, to discuss suggested changes regarding personnel matters, and whereas the Committee of the Whole made a recommendation to the Town Council to update current personnel matters, remain competitive in the employment market, and to utilize additional tools for recruitment, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to approve and enact the following: Update job descriptions for the positions of Chief of Police, Public Safety, Deputy Chief of Police, Police Captain, Telecommunicator 1, Director of Finance, and PC Network Support Specialist 2. Award moving expenses for non-union, non-union external hires, with 50% of the cost forgiven after one year of service, and the remaining 50% of the cost forgiven upon the completion of two years of service, as appropriate. Award a signing bonus for external non-union hires awarded in multiple portions during and at the close of the probationary period, where appropriate. Allow the hire of non-union employees above the maximum entry rate in the applicable salary range, where appropriate. Award a compensation adjustment to the Chief of Police in the amount of 167,000 per annum effective October 2nd, 2022. Update the compensation maximum for the position range for the Director of Finance to 148,090. I so move.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Jones. That's sweet. Counselor McBride?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make a comment on the last one, but I guess I didn't get my hand up, so I'm going to do it now. I'd like to propose an amendment to this motion, and my reason being is I completely understand the moving expenses piece, the signing, the signing bonus piece, the non-union piece, and I understand, but I also have concerns with the chief, with the chief of police increasing. And the reason being, not that I don't think it's needed, because I completely understand Town Manager Burt's emphasis on making sure he or she is in the number one slot, because that's, that's how it's working, and it works well. My concern is that this current increase is 17.8% increase, and the Director of Finance increase is 10%. So what I would like to propose, because I do think it's, it's worthy of increasing the chief of police salaries for consistency and to make sure they're in that top spot, but I would like to propose amendment of everything as is, with the exception of making the chief of police salary move from 141,731 to, rounded at 156,000, which would be a little bit over 10%, which is a similar increase to what the Director of Finance increase would be, and I think that's a little more understandable of why that increase, and why that increase is deserving.
I'll second that.
Was your number 156,000?
156,000, which represents 10, a little bit over 10%, which is a similar, same increase as the Director of Finance.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Bordelon. Counselor Bordelon?
Did he already speak to his motion?
Yes.
Oh, he did, okay, I didn't want to. Yeah, I think that's a, that's an emotion I can get behind. I think that's, we're saying there needs to be an increase, and so that, that puts it, the percent increase on the same playing field. Again, I, I do not like these types of meetings where we come out and go right back in. It really does not, the dialogue and discussion from our previous meeting, the community at large hasn't really had a chance to digest it. It's not just what's on the agenda, it's what the commentary is that happens here and the back and forth dialogue. And we come out and go back in like this, it, to me, doesn't really provide a very open chance for transparency or a chance for folks to contact us in support or against, or, or in favor, or whatever. It would be nice to have some input from the community, since their taxpayer dollars are on the line. With that, I think that's a fair step, and I think I would encourage other counselors to look at them. I did look at this, the website that she recommended, the CMC. I am seeing financial directors medium higher in most aspects. I actually think that the financial director's number is actually quite low in comparison to the size of the municipality, in comparison to some others. So that's also still concerning to me. Thank you.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Green, did you say that the changes to the chief of police job description were so extreme that you didn't mark them in red? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Sorry about that, I just noticed that. Correct. Their majority of the duties were a change, so it would be mostly red in that area.
Would you say they are more than the Director of Finance, the amount of changes?
In the amount of changes, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I'm doing a little research myself, and I look up the demographics of just say Old Stabrook, with a population of 10,087 people, and their police chief makes 222,813, and that was in 2020. What I see in the market right now is what they call the great resignation. I see it in when members of our town staff come to us and they talk about how they're being, trying to be poached by other communities, and the offers they're getting from other communities, trying to get our staff to go work for them. So I personally think I would rather keep the institutional knowledge within our community than have people that work for us leave for greater, greener pastures that offer more, because that's what all municipalities are doing right now. And if that's the case, you're losing so much knowledge. So just as what I've seen in the market right now, I can support this, the motion, the original motion, not the amended motion, because as people in all jobs right now have many options, there's a vast amount of openings out there for, for just about every profession. So it's a different position than years ago, I would say. And I've also looked at some other articles, and police within communities do make a high salary, and that, it's very well established that you can find this, just simply by Googling. So thank you, and I will support the original motion.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote, and to be clear, we're voting on McBride's amendment, which is $156,000 for the police chief. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so I have failing three in favor, Baumgartner, Bordelon, McBride, six opposed, and zero abstaining. We're now on to the main motion, which is the motion written, just as written in front of you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Carrie's seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Bordelon, McBride. Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So motion by Counselor Casiri, seconded by, what's second? Bordelon? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie's, I'm seeing nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. We are adjourned at 9:20, but we're not done yet, we have to go back.
Do we?
Okay. Yeah, so we have to go back and just adjourn the other meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so just, we're back from recess at 9:20 to the Committee of the Whole, Committee of the Whole meeting. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Parker, seconded by Counselor Baumgartner. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned at 9:20 unanimously.
Aye.